I'd like to call over the council meeting for November 21st, 2018. Go call please.
Councilman Coles. Councilwoman Fien.
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas here. Mayor Sherrell.
Pledge of allegiance please.
Pledge of allegiance to flag, the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's up, Paul?
How you doing?
Hey, back to last month.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes on October 24th, 2018 for the Menneson Council meeting.
Well, which one of those, didn't we have to make a change to one of those in regards to the, what was it? The Civic Center?
You mean about the, it was reported?
Yeah.
Yeah, we took care of it.
Okay.
It's in here. Yeah, it's in here. It's on your jet.
Okay.
So, motion?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Fien.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes on November 8th, 2018 for the Menneson Work Session.
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Fien.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
And I would like to announce that there was an executive session on November 8th and we had an executive session prior to tonight's meeting. I will now, we will now accept public comments on agenda items only. Seeing that everybody wants to get out of here early for Thanksgiving, I understand. Treasury report please.
Members of the Menneson City Council. Say, treasurer's report for the month ending November 18th. The income for October. Garbage fees, revenues. Current garbage for October, two hundred and sixty, $2,657.50. Year-to-date, $327,915.74. 2018 budgeted, $340,000. Garbage delinquents, $2,657.48. Underlyate, $2,898.94. 2018 budgeted, $105,000. Garbage Housing Authority, which is paid quarterly, year-to-date, $46,166.25. 2018 budgeted, $62,595. Total budget for 2018 is $507,595. Garbage used collected for 2019. October, we received $8,932.50. Year-to-date, $9,220.50. 2018 budgeted for the 2019 is $120,000. City real estate taxes, revenues. City real estate taxes current for October, $9,910.12. Those for the general fund. We received $1,282,000. The debt service will receive $479,000. Parks, the budget to receive, $188,000. Library Fund will receive $50,000 for a total of $1,999,000. Delinquent city taxes. City taxes prior year collected. For October, we received nothing. And the 2018 budgeted was $1,000. City taxes collected by Westmoreland County. Tax claim year, quarterly, $165,160.62. 2018 budgeted amount is $100,000. Total year-to-date taxes, $1,972,232.32. And distribution by city real estate taxes is as follows. The general fund received $1,263,550.69. Debt service fund received $472,106.70. The parks fund received $185,294.48. And the library fund received $49,280.45. For a total of $1,172,232.32. Members of council, that is my report. Do you need a motion please?
Second. You've got a motion to accept the treasurer's report, yes, right.
Councilwoman Fien.
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Thank you. Police report for the month ending October 2018. Parking permits of $3,050. Viscouslanas collections of $95. District Justice is $1,931. And total receipts collected for October 2018 is $6,204.35. Make the motion to approve payment to WEC Inc. in the amount of $7,982.80 for construction management and inspection services for the fiscal year 2016. CDBG Street Improvement Project, Phase 1 for reconstruction of Alquippa Avenue, Chestnut Street, and Maple Avenue to be paid out of CDBG funds.
Second.
Have a second. Questions on the motion?
Councilwoman Fien.
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
A motion to approve payment to Urban Design Ventures in the amount of $5,000 for preparation and submission of the fiscal year 2018. CDBG application to DCEB to be paid out of the CDBG funds.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilwoman Fien.
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to El Grande Industries Inc. for periodic payment number two final in the amount of $81,360.18 for the fiscal year 2016 Roadway Rehabilitation Project, Phase 1. MON-2018-1 for the recommendation of WEC Inc. to be paid out of CDBG funds. Have a second? Oh, I didn't hear.
Councilwoman Fien.
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
A motion to authorize WEC Inc. for to prepare plans and specifications for a CDBG fiscal year 2017 Roadway Rehabilitation Project, Phase 1 from McKey Avenue from Sixth Street to Reed Avenue.
Second.
Second. Questions on the motion?
Councilwoman Fien.
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
A motion to approve proposed draft of the additional Chapter 18 Bodyguard Camera Policy for the City of Menneson Police Department, Operations Manual effective November 21st, 2018.
Second.
Have a second. Questions on the motion?
Councilwoman Fien.
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 14-2018 authorizing a change to the signatories on the Farmers National Bank checking accounts. Have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilwoman Fien.
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to authorize the city administrator to complete and submit his grant application for approximately $25,000 from the Westmoreland County Act 152 Demo Fund Program.
Second.
Have a second. Questions on the motion?
Councilwoman Fien.
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
And a motion to authorize the city administrator to advertise a special meeting on Friday, November 30th, 2018 at 5:15 PM for the purpose of adoption and advertisement of the 2019 proposed budget.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilwoman Fien.
Aye.
Councilwoman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
And I'm going to break off for a second. I apologize. I was going to have a speaker say something before I got into all this art. Dave, you want to introduce?
Phil Koch from the, yeah.
Great. I just wanted to quickly, I won't take much of your time. I know that we're all trying to get home to make our turkeys. And I want to thank Councilman Fien for inviting me to come today, really to talk to you for a moment about the Vehicle Emissions Reduction Fund. That fund was created as part of a lawsuit that was filed between Penn Environment, which is a statewide environmental firm, and ArcelorMittal. As part of the settlement, $300,000 was set aside to create this Vehicle Emissions Reduction Fund. The fund is supposed to be used to provide grants to nonprofit organizations, school districts, and municipalities that are in the communities of Menneson, Carroll, and Denora. So, we were charged to administer those funds and we have to work, our charge is to work with Penn Environment hand-in-hand to figure out how those funds should be distributed. When we had our original meeting back at the end of last year to discuss what our strategy would be, we knew that we had sort of two ways to look at this. One would be to take the $300,000 and then to go to the municipalities and the school districts and nonprofits to see if they have any projects that would fall into the two requirements. Two requirements would be, one, replacing existing vehicles that you might have in your fleet with either electric vehicles or vehicles that are considered greener to the environment. So, that would be one. And number two would be to install infrastructure in those three communities to be able to handle electric vehicles. So, those are really the two main things, or CNG would be the other one. So, those are really the two things that we, that we're looking at, at doing is those two things. But we had to make a decision about whether we take that $300,000 and immediately go and put out an RFP and go to communities and ask for that, or if there was a strategy to make a greater impact. And as I looked at what grants were available that were similar at the state and federal level, what I realized is that there's quite a bit of money that's coming down from the state and coming down from the federal level that is very similar to what the fund, what we're trying to accomplish with the fund. But a lot of those grants that come down from the state and federal level require match. They say, for every $3 that the state gives you, you have to provide a dollar. And so, the thought was, instead of rushing into distributing the $300,000 throughout the three communities, which would get us about this far, let's take a pause and apply for some of those state and federal grants as a way to leverage the $300,000 for a larger amount. So, that's the strategy. So, we've been working on that strategy this year. We've got some applications that are going in. Two of them are going towards the Volkswagen Fund. So, if you remember Volkswagen, there was a settlement with Volkswagen with that yielded billions of dollars that came down through the federal government that's now come to the state level and ready to be applied for, for grant funding. And again, it's specifically for the same things that I described. Electric car, infrastructure in those three communities, as well as replacement of vehicles. So, we've applied for those grants and we're in the process of applying for those grants, but it's a long process, right? Nothing goes fast with the state and federal government. So, we're waiting to hear how that process goes and we'll continue to keep you all updated on where we are with that process.
Question?
Yes.
First of all, you mentioned that some of the stuff is also for libraries and things of that nature, right?
It could be. That there's, those are the three entities that can apply or that could receive the funding. School districts, nonprofits, and municipal governments.
I think it was recorded in the paper and it was very great that they did. I believe the Menneson Library got, was it $250,000 or was it $250,000? It's one of the two.
I thought I read $250,000.
Not from, not from this one. They may have gotten, they may have gotten money from the community foundation. We administer lots of different funds, whether it be through individual donors or through our general grant making. Very possible that they received a grant, if not through this one. That would be possible.
So, when a couple of us, all of us attended a meeting back in October for DCEB when the, I believe is the deputy, assistant deputy came out, spoke to us. And that's when they announced the $300,000 for three communities, okay?
DCEB?
So, during that meeting, I'll tell everybody, so we went to, we attended a meeting with the Deputy Secretary of DCEB for the state. And at that meeting was Mac and Chris Whitlatch.
Yes, from Mont Valley Lines.
Yes. So, Chris Whitlatch stood up and said that the three municipalities were awarded the $300,000 and it would be split up equally upon them.
Okay.
So, it was my understanding that Whitlatch was hired to be like the link between us? Is that how this?
Not quite. I mean, if I could explain.
Can I jump in just real quick?
Sure.
This $300,000 were from the consent decree sent down from the EPA with ArcelorMittal, is that correct?
That's correct.
Part of that consent decree was for the surrounding communities. It was, I believe, from what was in the newspaper, I haven't seen a copy of this, that all three communities were supposed to get an equal share of that, that being Denora, Charlotte, and Menneson.
If I could submit this.
That's fine. I'm just trying, we're trying to.
This is actually a great.
No. No.
Go ahead. So, you're saying that it was to split up equally?
That was council's understanding whenever we were at that meeting.
So, my question then is, you've decided to take that bulk of money and try to get matching grants and get more funds.
To leverage it, yes.
Okay. At what point in time did you and why did you make that decision and you didn't tell the municipalities, to my knowledge? That wasn't your decision to make. That was our decision to make. That's our money. Where's our money? I want to know where our money's at.
Sure. So, the money is sitting at the community foundation of Westmoreland County.
Then you'll make a check for it tomorrow?
No. If you read, if you read what the decree is that I just submitted, what it says is that we are to provide grants to nonprofit organizations, school districts, or municipalities in those three communities, that are within those three communities. Nowhere in there does it say that it's to be split up evenly or equally.
Again, the DCEB Deputy Secretary told us at that meeting that it was to be split up separately and we were all three awarded $100,000. So, again, I asked the question, where's our money?
The money is at the community foundation of Westmoreland County. What I'm saying to you is that I don't know why they, I don't think they would have the authority to say that at that meeting. I mean, if you read what it says in the decree, it says that we're to come up with a grant program to provide grants to municipalities, school districts, and nonprofit organizations.
So, we still have $100,000 of it ours, right?
What I'm saying to you is.
Do we have $100,000 that is ours?
No, I will not, I cannot tell you that I'm earmarking for you all to spend $100,000. What I can say is that I'm trying to create this larger fund and that at that time, the hope is that we'll be able to work together so that we can provide funding for you all that will exceed $100,000 to do some of these projects.
And with there's matching grants, there's administrative costs and things of that nature, correct?
Well.
Nobody does it for free.
That's on our side.
So, you're going to foot all costs and not take anything out of the $300,000 that you're trying to make money off?
Right. That's what we do as a community foundation. We administer grants. The way we pay for ourselves as an organization is not through taking money from the funds.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, the bunch of safe grants that you went dollar-for-dollar and you ended up with $6,000?
$600,000.
Okay. Right. So, that $600,000, would that be distributed to the three or are you going to just only still use three for the three municipalities?
So, the idea would be if we had, let's say we have 600 now.
Right.
I would put out an RFP that says, we're looking for, you know, an RFP, request for proposal, and we would come to you and say, you know, we have this amount of money to put electric charging stations, you know, within the community to replace vehicles. Do you have an interest in doing this? If you do, submit a proposal.
So, that would still be for?
And if it makes sense, then we'll fund that proposal.
But that would still be for just the three?
Just those three communities.
Okay. So, nobody else would be included?
That's absolutely right. We're restricted to those three communities.
But what I have a problem with is.
We're going to, you guys just ask questions.
What I have a problem with is you're making the rules as they go along, who you're going to do things for, and I've got a problem with that. Because we were told specifically, here's the money, it's coming to you, it's going to us, Denora, maybe was it Gonkahela?
It's, I don't know.
Okay. And we were told, this is it. Congratulations, you've got the money. Now, we're hearing that you guys have the money, but you're going to hold everything up. We need that right now. We could use it. Our police cars are falling apart. Our officers need something that's stable and reliable. And again, even if you cut us a check right now, it would even, it would take weeks to months into next year to even start the funnel, to use that money for good things. I don't want you pissing with it for another five or six months. I want the damn stuff now. That's what we were promised. That's what I want. I don't want you messing with it. Point blank, simple. I don't want you messing with what we guarantee. I'd rather take the chance of saying, I'll take my $100,000, thank you very much, we're going to distribute it and use it for what we need right now for this community. I'm not rolling the dice that you might get $20,000 more or something else now. This city needs it now, not, because you said it yourself, the government could take six, eight months before this sits there and we never, we don't see it. And trust me, down the road, something, somewhere is going to happen and it's going to go, oops.
So, I appreciate your feedback and I'll take that back to the organization.
So, the problem I have is the consent decree was dated November 30th, 2017.
Yes, that's correct.
You guys received the money in February of this year?
Could be. I don't have that.
The first I heard about it?
Yeah.
Was by the DCEB Secretary.
Right.
So, the lack of communication on your nonprofits' part.
Yes.
To the three communities. I don't know if, and this is, we had this discussion on the phone.
We did.
It baffles me that the money has been there for just shy of a year. We've never heard about it, except from an external entity who had technically nothing to do with it.
That's right.
I submitted documentation to Mac and Engineering, I believe they sent it to you guys, on vehicles that we currently have for the street crew and for the police department that need replaced with E85 efficient fuel cars, which does qualify technically.
Right. We were trying to get information so we knew what grants to apply for, yes.
Yeah. But I never heard anything back. It was like it disappeared.
Right. So, I apologize that we haven't been more clear on our communication.
So, but the $300,000 since February, are we making interest on it?
No.
Just to, just to follow up, no. Chris Whitlatch was in the room whenever it was announced that these three communities were getting this money and, you know.
I can circle back with Chris.
No, 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 no. I think, you know, these guys were under the impression that, hey, we submitted this grant application, you know, hey, that was awarded. Now, it took, what, two months for somebody to come back here and inform them, like, oh no, here's the actual plan of what this nonprofit's doing with this money. I think that's where the unhappiness is here from their perspective.
I'm sorry, say that part again, I didn't understand the last part. That was, there wasn't a grant application that this, that Menneson submitted, was there?
Yeah, I sent the list of.
Oh, the list, but that wasn't an application. You were just sending information that we requested to better understand what the needs were in the community.
But I never heard anything back.
I understand.
And it took me calling you.
Yep.
To find out what was up with the money. Now, I'm going to let the public ask you some questions because they have a right to ask you questions also.
Sounds good.
Okay. Now, this money isn't really an outright grant. In order to use this money, they have to, what, tie themselves up with this particular type of vehicle?
That's correct, so.
Okay, so they can't take the money for conventional vehicles?
They cannot. They cannot. They would have to.
Okay, now, since it's tied in, what's the bigger cost? You have to have infrastructure, you have to have all this. So, you might get it up to $600,000, but for each community to really utilize this concept of this project, they may have to invest $2 million?
Right, so.
Okay, so where am I going to get $2 million?
So, you're leading, you're leading to the point I was trying to make earlier.
That's right. So, this money ain't really nothing because it ain't going to solve your problem, you know, with the budget and current conditions. They want us to go into the next New World Order where they want us all, it's like they got Wi-Fi. They want us to all now go into these type of projects where we're not, creating carbon footprint, you know, with the environment and all that. But that's an extra cost. So, he's giving us a little bit of bait, to bring us in, and then the whole bourbon comes on each community.
So, can I answer this?
Yeah, right. Do you have a question?
Sure. So, part of what he's saying is true, that if you replace a car that you currently have with an electric vehicle, you're going to need the infrastructure to support that. If you look at how much that types of infrastructure and the costs are to have an electric vehicle, it's pretty high. And so, that was part of the thinking of, why don't we go and see if we can obtain additional grants, not on your dime, not on your backs, but we'll do the work and we'll get that done.
But there's no infrastructure required for E85 vehicles.
Oh, yeah.
No.
Who hasn't, there is.
But you keep stressing that you're going to do the work and I understand that, and do whatever.
Yeah, but always.
You made a way, Ernie, Ernie, stop please.
You're missing the point.
You said you were going to, you were applying for matching grants. And unless I'm wrong, matching grants, whenever we, we look at them, means it's going to cost me something.
Right.
To be able to get something.
Right. And what we're saying is that $300,000 is the base that we're using to match.
And that's what I'm telling you, I don't want you messing with our $100,000. I want our $100,000 and we'll do it ourselves.
It's tied in with this project.
I understand, but if.
But that's not what was explained to us and promised to us from DCEB.
I don't know who explained that to you. I didn't, if it wasn't me and it wasn't Penn Environment, then I don't know who it was or what organization to do that.
Chris Whitlatch.
Okay.
He stood up there and said it.
Then, okay.
Does he not represent your organization?
No, he doesn't.
He's not affiliated with you guys at all?
We asked him to work with us locally to help us better understand what vehicles you have, what the opportunities are, but he did not work for me. He's not an employee, he's not a contractor.
So, again, the disconnect I have a problem with is you went to him and you were asking him to work with the communities to find out what they may need.
Yes, because that's an order.
Why did you not come to us directly? There's only like four or five of us down here a day, if that's it. There's a huge disconnect here that I'm not seeing and I have a problem with.
I hear what you're saying.
I've got a massive problem with. Because we even told people, the city's going to be part of 100, 300,000, and we're getting $100,000 for fuel-efficient vehicles, electric vehicles, and everything. Now, we find out, Jesus God, this could, we could be sitting here three years from now and you guys are still playing games.
I can go back to Penn Environment and ask them if they'd like me to change strategies.
Again, why are you making the strategy?
Because according to the decree, the funds came to the community foundation to administer the funds.
But they're supposed to be distributed in the communities.
Can I finish please?
Go ahead.
Because that's what we do as a community foundation, is we work on community projects and distribute funds, charitable funds. That's why they came to us, because they wanted us to hold those funds, to put out, and to figure out, how do we put out an RFP that people can respond to and apply for the grants to obtain the dollars? That's what we do as an organization. That's why they came to come to us and asked us to be their partner in this.
Well, I'd say you're failing miserably right now.
I appreciate it.
Is that, is that $300,000 producing interest? No, he said.
It's held, it's held in cash, so it's, there's a little interest made, but not, not a ton. And the reason is because, is because we, again, we don't want the risk of losing it as the market goes down.
And what interest you are collecting goes toward the $300,000?
I'm sorry?
What interest you are collecting, what little interest?
It's held in cash, so I mean, you're talking about a difference of one or two dollars. It's not.
Well, you have to be sitting it in a bank or a security or something so it doesn't get lost, am I correct?
Yes.
So, you're not making any interest on it?
Very little.
Who does your books? That's common sense.
I have a question. You guys don't think it would have been nice to meet with the three municipalities together and ask them if they were okay with this?
I was hoping that, I was hoping that the Mont Valley Lines was helping with that and I thought, and I apologize.
He failed miserably.
I apologize.
Let me get this clear, because I think they're not hitting the nail on the head. In order to use those funds, you have to engage and enter into this other project where it's going to cost them money to support. So, what kind of money is that? Okay? That's not money. These people think they're going to get the money and then they'll spread it where they need it. That money is bait. You know what bait is? They're going to drive you to another debt, a debt bond to exercise the infrastructure. Okay? And when he says he's going to bring more, you know, to the table from 300 to 600, all he's doing is he's making the bait bigger for you to bite into it. But the infrastructure is on your backs.
So, then one last question. What's your timeframe?
People don't know what's going on.
The hope is that we would have to be ready to move in six months.
Six months?
Yeah, that's another.
Wait. Ernie, please stop.
You know what they, they're going to put a snow job.
Ernie, please stop.
They're putting a snow job.
You want me to kick you out?
Well, that's when you know how to say it, right? How to kick out.
Six months.
Six months from the time you got the money, so that was February?
No, that's not what I said.
Six months of today.
Because we're, because again, the strategy was that we were going to apply for, that we have applied for these state and federal dollars, the Volkswagen money, to leverage the money.
When was the exact, when did you guys apply for that?[1761.16]
I'd have to look, it was in the last month.
So, is it just the Volkswagen, or have you done other ones?
There are three of them.
And have those been reported to the municipalities or whatever, what you're doing?
No, I don't believe so, we've been doing that separately. So, the grants are the Volkswagen Level Two E D Charging Rebate Program, the V W D C, uh, Fast Charging Hydrogen Fueling Grant Program, and the P A Advanced Fueling Infrastructure Grant. But, like I said, if you want me to change courses, which it sounds like you do, then I can go back to Penn Environment and talk to them about that strategy. And if they're comfortable, then we can come back and, and we can just put out an RFP tomorrow and get the money out and get, accept your grant application and be on our way, if that's really what you want. What we're trying to do is we were trying to maximize the impact of the grant.
I can appreciate that.
Whether we were bad at communication, absolutely, I admit that. We did not communicate, do I get it?
And I would have thought it if you would have said, "All right, this is November, we've been doing this since August, May, not a problem," I get it, "but since you've had it since February and we didn't know nothing," no, shame on you. Shame on you guys, that's poor.
Wait, one, one more question from the audience and then we're done.
The money, excuse me, over here.
Yes, sir.
This money must be spent on green projects?
Yes, sir.
That's right, that's a good one.
Ernie? Thank you. So, what you're attempting to do is use this as seed money as matching funds as you try to get grants to build a infrastructure, a green infrastructure, electrical and, what did you call it?
It's the E eighty-five, like Chevy has the vehicles that take regular fuel away.
That's the, uh, corn alcohol.
I, yeah.
Okay, so that's what you're trying to do with this money, use it as seed money?
That, that was the idea, yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I need to...
I couldn't quite... Hey, Dave, just one quick question, I, I need to clarify.
All right.
That, that library two hundred fifty dollars from the M B A, Mon Valley Alliance, did not, had no bearing on this money?
Nothing.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
No, no, not, no, I, I don't even, I think that's part of their small grants program, but again, they're not our organization.
But basically what you're saying is each community has a hundred thousand dollars of matching grant money sitting there for these other projects that you wanna try to...
So, the, what the, what the decree says is that, it does not say specifically that it's a hundred for each. It says there's three hundred thousand to be used throughout those three communities.
And it was sent, the money has been sent to you because...
So, we're a community foundation, and what, and part of what we do is we hold charitable funds that then can be distributed through grant processes.
And this was sent to you by who?
By Ursula Middel, as, uh, part of the settlement.
Okay, so they were the ones that sent it to you?
Yes, that's right.
Or the, or the settlement agreement.
So, in actuality, Vanessa may not get the hundred thousand, Carol Thompson may not get a hundred thousand, and the other, and DeNora may not. It goes as seed fit?
It, it goes to who fits the, the...
Right.
So, for example, if we put out an, an RFP for green, uh, for green vehicles,
Right.
and DeNora decides not to apply,
Right.
but the school district does for buses or something, right?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Then, yes, it's possible that the money would go to a school district and not to a municipality if one applied, one didn't.
Correct. That's what I thought you was trying to throw out there.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that, I'm just telling you that that's what...
You're just the, you're the spokesman for them?
Or, you're not the company that you work for? I'm the executive director of the community foundation, yes.
Yeah, and so you, yourself, don't make all the decisions?
No, 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 we have a board, uh...
That's what I'm, yeah, you're here just to explain it to these people.
That's right.
You're not, and you're not the guy that issues the funds.
That's right.
Your organization issues them.
That's right.
And the reason I asked him to come is because this is the first...
Correct.
We, we hadn't heard of anything, except they got money, hadn't heard anything until the meeting with the D C E D chief, which was in October, September, and then still didn't hear anything, until I called, um, Philip on, what, Friday?
That's right.
Last week.
I mean, the record, the record, Dave, the thing is, with the Westmoreland Foundation, they've helped a lot of people, they've done a lot of good. With the, with the exception of the miscommunication, I mean, I think the attention was, was good on their part to do what was right. I mean, the money could have never came from Ursula Mattel to us, right, it had to go through, that's the way it's...
It had to go through that, yes, but the communication and the fact that Mr. Whitlatch was saying things that were not true now, obviously.
I don't know if this... I mean, they made a, they made a big announcement when all the municipalities and cities were at this meeting specifically for this. And we were so excited that we were getting a hundred thousand that could put green vehicles and help the street guys, help the fire, help everybody, this was fantastic.
All three of, or all of us were there, Jonathan was there.
I, I think what the, what the council's getting at, if, uh, there's a hundred thousand dollars, uh, the need for vehicles for the city, uh, with your F eighty-five, uh, with a hundred thousand dollars they could purchase three vehicles, uh, with, uh, F eighty-five?
Use the E eighty-five, we break five.
Well, that, that's probably what they're, what they're getting at because of the immediate need.
Or use the money to, like, for a lease program for a fleet of E eighty-five vehicles.
Right.
I, I, I'm hearing you loud and clear, and, um, and I wanna stress that, yes, we try to have the best intentions of, of the three communities in mind. I mean, you know, there's, there's no benefit to us to spend all of our time trying to chase state and federal dollars. There's no benefit to me, or to the organization for that matter. The benefit was, we thought it would be the best thing for the community. The mistake we made is that we were not clear on our communication, and I apologize.
Clearly, Eric, to me, you aren't making no money on this.
We are, we are not making a cent on any of this.
Right, so...
This is just part of our mission, it's what we do.
You're trying to help.
We're just trying to do the best we can, and I apologize that our communication was bad.
Well, that's the only thing you did, I mean, you know, we all make mistakes, we're human, so I wouldn't sweat.
I appreciate it, thank you. But, that, that means, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Say, say the community comes up with a hundred thousand, and then you matched that hundred, correct?
No.
Go ahead. No.
All right, the money's already been matched?
No, the, the three hundred thousand is, we have the three hundred thousand dollars. And the cho, the choice is, is that we can either just distribute, you know, we can either just take applications now and figure out what projects you want, or what vehicles you need to replace, and then it can be done, or it's to go to the state and ask for more money, so that we can have more money to use and work with.
That's part of my point. But whenever they, say they purchase a vehicle, what is the percentage that is gonna cost them per year on the, what side of everything? If they spend a hundred thousand, what's the percentage on top of it that they're gonna be putting out in the next two years?
So, the studies I've seen is that the, uh, is that the maintenance costs, uh, and the, uh, the cost, because you're, because of the decrease of fuel costs, that you're actually saving money on the vehicles in the long run. That's, that's what the research says, I don't, I don't have that, I don't, I don't have, I don't know that.
I think what we must all be clear on, now, as you said loud and clear, is that we may not get a hundred thousand. It's gonna be, right, so we must all be aware of that, that may not be the case. Right, because the application, they're gonna look at that, and we may not get anything really, if depending on somebody else's is more dire than ours, correct?
No.
It could be, I'm just throwing that out.
That's why I'm so adamant, saying, to probably check.
Okay, I encourage you to talk to your solicitor and to have your solicitor brief you on the document I just gave you. Because the document's very clear, and am I saying things that are against the document, sir?
Uh, based on my five minutes.
Right. Exactly, and so what I'm saying is, nowhere in there does it say that my job is to cut you a hundred thousand dollars. It doesn't say that, and so, I mean, whether somebody told you that at one point, then that was a miscommunication and that was a possibility, I, I've admitted that, I've, I've admitted loud and clear, okay? But I can't, I can't continue to stand here and tell you that I can go, you know, go back to the office and cut you a hundred thousand dollar check, because then I'll be in trouble for going against the decree.
Right.
That's not what it says. Why I brought it for you.
The reason I called you here was to give us all the information.
I understand, and I'm trying to be as transparent as possible.
No, no, I appreciate that.
I brought the documents requested, I've spent my time here.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate it.
Technically, if you took the hundred thousand dollars just as a taxpayer and outsider doesn't deal with this, a hundred thousand dollars is a heck of a match for a bigger grant, right?
That's my point, is that, and that's where I was trying to lead, was, and I understand that the dire need right now, but the fact is that...
If you were to apply for, if you were to apply for a big grant and put the hundred thousand dollars up, if you don't get the grant, you don't lose the money, right?
That's exactly right.
So, that's, you know, that's...
That's exactly right.
We need to think about a bigger picture, you know what I mean?
I mean, that's... We're hoping six months, but I mean, that's, and that's where we're really trying to head. And if you look at, if a school district, for example, decides to go with an electric bus, that's three hundred thousand. That's all the money in one bus, and so that was our point, is that when you're talking about replacing vehicles and infrastructure, it's very costly.
I mean, if you thought about making all the police cars green, all the, all the city trucks green, and then putting your hundred thousand up as you're matching in, that's, that's a no brainer, right?
That's where we're trying to head.
Phil?
But I'm, I'm hearing now that that's not what the council wants.
Can, can we set up, like, a monthly meeting with you guys?
Absolutely.
Call, call?
Sure.
Uh, just so we can touch base and if you have information?
I would like direction, though, from, from, uh, from you all, on whether you would like me to figure out a new process or a new...
Let us, let us look at the decree, and I'll shoot you an email tomorrow, is that cool?
Not tomorrow, we should be eating turkey tomorrow.
Monday.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Thanks.
But thank you, then.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the library report for the month of October two thousand eight is available if anybody wants to see it. Uh, the library financial report is also available for the ending of October two thousand eighteen also. And then motions to approve payment to Rittenar and Sons Construction Company Inc. for periodic estimate number two in the amount of fifteen thousand dol, fifteen thousand dollars in periodic estimate number three for the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for a total of thirty thousand dollars for the two thousand eighteen downtown Vanessa demolition and site clearance project for the recommendation of W E C Inc. to be paid out of the bond refinancing funds. You have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian?
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve and propose two thousand nineteen health insurance renewal for the retiree under sixty-five coverage with U P M C Premium Network for an approximate annual premium cost of one hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred dollars. You have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian?
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve the proposed two thousand nineteen health insurance renewal for the retiree over sixty-five with Highmark Security Blue H M O Deluxe for an appropriate annual cost of fifty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian?
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
And a motion to approve refund of two thousand eighteen real estate taxes overpayment to George T. and Ronacy...
Ronald.
Adapolikas?
Apodiakas.
Adap, Apodiakas, in the amount of five hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty cents due to a change of assessment.
Second.
Thank you. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian?
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas, I pass it to you.
We have a street and park report available for review, if anybody would like to see that for October two thousand eighteen. But as you can see, they continue to patch as many roads as possible, getting ready for the winter, winterizing the trucks, repairing the sewage at the Columbus Park, and the lights at Socrates Field, so those are just a few of the many things they've been doing. But I have a motion to approve payment to Grand A Industries Inc. for the repair of four stormwater inlets on Motherwell Avenue in the amount of five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. And repair one stormwater inlet at the corner of Marying Avenue near Billig Funeral Home, in the amount of two thousand dollars for a total cost of seven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars to be paid out of line usage funds for the recommendations from W E C Inc.
You have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian?
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas.
You're welcome.
Councilman Fian?
Hi, everybody. I have the, uh, code office reports and financials for October twenty eighteen, if anybody would like to see them. Uh, I have the fire report for the month of October two thousand eighteen, um, EMS report, and the Civic Center rec board report, if anybody would like to see them. I just wanna say, as always, thank you to my firemen for the job you guys did.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind a previous motion to approve the purchase of a wall-mounted scoreboard for the Civic Center in the approximate amount of fourteen hundred, thirty-three dollars and twenty cents to be paid out of the recreation board funds, which includes a donation of one thousand dollars from the Vanessa Lions Club, and to purchase and install a wall plaque in recognition of, for the, of the Lions Club support.
Second.
Sorry.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian?
Wayne, did you have a...
There's a hundred, there was one thousand four hundred and...
Yeah, it's fourteen hundred, thirty-three dol.
Yeah, it's a padding.
Well, it's...
Yeah, that's why, that's why we're rescinding the motion.
We're sending that, we're doing a new one.
Just so everybody knows, it was a misprint of the verbiage, it was supposed to be for the wallboards. The donation was for the, the padding, for the wallboards, it was not for the, the scoreboard. So, that's why we have to rescind that one and redo it with the, what the donation from the Lions Club was actually for, if that makes sense. You guys, okay, I confused myself a little bit with that one. So, the motion to rescind the misprinted one, do I have a second?
We do.
Okay.
Councilman Fian?
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, now the, the right. Motion to approve the quote received from B S N Sports in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents for the purchase of the wall-mounted scoreboard and purchase of safety wall padding for the basketball court in the amount of four thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents to be paid out of the rec board funds, which includes a donation of one thousand dollars from the Vanessa Lions Club for the wall padding specifically, and a donation of two hundred and fifty dollars from the Mon Valley Alliance, and to purchase and install a wall plaque in recognition of the Lions Club's support and care for the health and safety of the children of Vanessa. Do I have a second? Any question?
Councilman Fian?
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Sorry about that, David.
Uh, main thing this month was working with the chief of police and council regarding the body worn cameras that council authorized the purchase of, I think it was last meeting. Wish everybody and their families have Thanksgiving tomorrow. Think Dave's making enough food for everybody, so...
Wow, my wife.
The following is the general fund checking account of Community Bank, bank reconciliation has October thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Beginning bank balance three hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars and three cents. Deposits one hundred fifteen thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and five cents, for a total of five hundred and seven thousand, fifty-four dollars and eight cents. Checks cash totaled four hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixteen cents. Leaving a bank balance of eighty-six thousand, seventy dollars and ninety-two cents. Deposits in transit totaled six thousand, twenty dollars. Outstanding checks ninety-one thousand, one hundred one dollar and fourteen cents. There was an adjustment of three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents for a final amount reconciled to the balance sheet of four thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and ten cents. Next is the C D B G Fund recorded. Beginning balance eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighteen cents. Deposits totaled one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-one cents, for a total of thirteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. There's an outstanding check of four thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-two cents. Leaving a final month end balance of nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seven cents. That's the C D B G Fund recorded. And, do you want to use your motion, please?
A motion to approve, as Fred, you have a controller? Second. Any questions, what motion?
Councilman Fian?
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Excuse me. In a motion to approve payment of checks already released from the general fund for the month of November two thousand eighteen in the amount of eighty-six thousand, ninety-five dollars and twenty-eight cents?
Second.
You have a second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian?
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Motion to approve electronic transfers from the general fund to the payroll fund for payroll for November two thousand eighteen in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and one cent?
Second.
You have a second, questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian?
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve electronic transfers from the general fund to the healthcare account for healthcare expenditures for the month of November 2018 in the amount of twelve thousand dollars.
Second.
You have a second? Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of general fund expenditures for the month of November 2018 in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-eight cents. You have a second?
No, second.
Thank you. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to the parks fund expenditures for the month of November 2018 in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and nineteen cents.
Second.
You have a second? Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of recreation board expenditures for the month of November 2018 in the amount of ninety-eight dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second.
You have a second? Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of the line usage fund expenditures for the month of November 2018 in the amount of eighty-one dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
Second. Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of the grant fund expenditures for the month of November 2018 in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Second.
You have a second? Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of the liquid fuels expenditures for the month of November 2018 in the amount of ten thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Second.
You have a second? Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment of capital improvement expenditures for the month of November 2018 in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
You have a second? Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
And motion to approve payment to Vanessa Public Library in the amount of library fund for the month of November 2018 in the amount of two thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and eight cents.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Rosachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Thank you. We will now entertain public comments on non-agenda items.
Let me add to that.
I was going to.
I'd be too. The thing, the one we had with Philip. We know as much as you guys know right now, so please don't gum up this with that. Okay? And second, I have your, the bills you asked for. See Judy after.
My turn?
Yeah.
Okay, we asked that everybody keep it to three minutes towards Thanksgiving. I know we all want to get out of here. And we ask that people don't throw things back and forth. We can get out of here and get done with it.
Go ahead, Art. You've got three minutes.
After you make payroll next week, what happens then? That is where it's complicated.
We're diligently trying to continue to find ways to pay our bills and/or pay payroll.
I noticed that you prefer to pay for police body cams or maybe...
That came out of, I believe...
That's their federal seizure money. Yeah, no, no, no. I just answered.
It's like we got a vehicle for the DDO officer who came out of the reverse.
Can you tell me, when is the next meeting? Because this is coming in... It doesn't go right because you have meetings right before Thanksgiving Eve. So we're going into December. You're not going to have a meeting just before Christmas.
Yeah, after Christmas Eve.
Right after Christmas Eve. Where does that come from?
No way.
The final meeting of the year is December 27th. There's a special meeting next Friday for the proposed budget. That'll be the only topic of the meeting.
Next Friday.
And then you'll have two in December, the second and fourth Thursday of December.
Okay, that fourth Thursday, isn't that like the 27th or something?
You have to do it multiple days.
You know, the public doesn't attend.
I mean, it was advertised in the paper.
I know, but how many people would pay for it?
Wow. That's an answer for Kylie.
Now, I have two more questions. I have this project over here. When are they going to get done and when are you going to make the final payments?
When they're done. When they're done.
When they're done. When do you think they're going to get done?
Do you think it's ninety days?
So when do they start? September?
No, it wasn't until the middle, end of, middle, end of October. They're pretty far ahead. Now they're cleaning it all up.
Because when they get done in December, you don't have funds. How are you going to plan?
Those funds are coming out of bond refinancing. Those funds are already allocated. That money was already allocated.
That can only be used to something, capital projects, demolitions are included for that reason.
Okay, and then how's your negotiation going with the city?
We can't talk about that. I'm sorry.
Did you hire anyone else?
You've been at the meetings. We didn't approve anybody.
But stick around because she has her package. Judy, can you just give me a few months to leave? I haven't seen you in forever.
I'm Adrian on the V I, 1116 Roosevelt Avenue, Vanessa. In regards to UCA's one three. Vehicles will end up costing you about twenty-two to twenty-seven percent more in maintenance than what you already paid. So you're going to lose that in the gas can. That's one. Number two, your maintenance crew may not be able to maintain these vehicles, so they will have to be sent out more.
I'm sure they have the workers.
I'm sure they do, but regular maintenance is different. They don't do that. The other thing, if you want to go green, instead of spending money on vehicles that's going to cost you a little bit more than what you already spend in maintenance, why don't you check with the power plants with the solar power programs? You can get them for free. They reimburse you for any extra electricity. That's extra money brought in. And then they're on that part of it instead of worrying about the vehicles right now.
Well, we're open to anything. It's just we didn't even know what their plan was. That was the thing.
I mean, because the government's supporting that program. So if you go green with the solar, that's one. You can also go with the windmill.
For First Amendment.
Because we're along the river. You only need so many feet for a windmill. And so I would look other avenues for green. It's not going to be as costly like up front. That's all I'm saying.
I appreciate it. It's good to see you again.
Thank you.
It's only because it's a hall like I...
Anybody else?
Sure?
Yeah.
I feel this is appropriate for Reed's night due to what went on. My name is Mark Sannacumbo. Everybody knows. So a little thing that we read at our office when we get new people. It starts off, "I am more powerful than the combined enemies of the world. I have destroyed more men than all the wars of all the nations. I've massacred thousands of people every year. I am more deadly than bullets. I have wrecked more homes than a cabal of the world's most sensuous women." Boy, there you go. "In the United States alone, I skill over five hundred million dollars a year. I spare no one, and I find victims among the rich, the poor, like the young and the old, the strong and the weak. Widows know me through their everlasting sorrow. I loom in such proportions that I cast my shadow over every field of labor. I lurk in unseen places, and I do most of my work silently. You are warned about me, yet you heed me not. I'm relentless, merciless, and cruel. I'm everywhere in your homes, on your streets, in your factories, railroad crossings, on the land, in the air, and on the sea. I bring sickness, degradation, and death, yet few seek out to destroy me. I crush, I maim, I will give you nothing, and I will rob you of everything you have. I'm your worst enemy." Does anybody know what that is? Anybody? It's not drugs. It's a poor decision. Decisions that are made here reflect on you, and they also reflect on everybody out here. So that's why I read this because let's not jump the gun. Let's, you know, let things go their direction and go from there. Because a poor decision, like I said, I read it to you. So it's not, just take our time and just let this guy do his job and go from there.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not going to spend money that we don't have.
Yeah.
If we didn't have it, so let's not push this guy for us to get this and then see Carol Townsend DeNoir get more money than us. Okay? Then we're going to be going, oh, man. No, oh, man, nothing. That's a man who is wrong. Don't spend money we do not have that we never did have.
My complaint was there was no communication.
Right, and he admitted that. And he's going to take care of that. But to demand something from the man who's trying to help us, that's quite an hand defeat. Right now, we're at their mercy. They have something that we need. So let's think about what we're going to do. Because like I said, it reflects you because election time, people in Vanessa are very unforgiving. You know what I'm saying? They're very unforgiving, and it affects the taxpayers.
Taxpayers.
Anyone else?
You're up. You've got to read this every time we get new guys.
My name's Don Greger. The 1428 Graham Avenue. And I'll be honest with you, three minutes won't even begin to cover. But since it is Thanksgiving Eve, when's the next meeting? November 30th?
We have the special one just for...
When's the next meeting?
Special meeting.
30th.
The 30th. Am I going to be able to speak then?
There'll be a non-agenda portion.
Yeah.
Excellent, excellent. I'm going to go with something for Mr. Orchowski. What's your GOTH plan for January 1st, 2019? Are you aware what a GOTH plan is? It's called a go-to-help plan. Well, what it has to do with something is the contract for the non-uniform employees expires then.
We can't discuss that.
No, yes, you can discuss.
No, this is not a forum to discuss that in public. That is under negotiations. That is private. You're not going to use that as a grandstand to sit here and talk about something.
I'm not going to grandstand. I do not grandstand. I have to do the question, if the union goes on strike, what is your go-to-help plan? How are you going to get the streets done?
We're not going to discuss that with you.
Why not?
Because again, it is to be discussed with negotiations. It is not to be discussed in public and it stays in executive session. That's the end of it. If you have another question, please continue on.
I disagree with you.
Well, you can disagree all you want. I'm telling you, please go on to the next one.
You're not a dictator.
I'm asking you to move on to the next.
You're not a dictator.
Do you understand?
I understand.
You can negotiate a contract in court in public.
Yes, you can.
We're not going to do that.
Of course you're not.
So are you three?
No, I'm not three.
You have two minutes.
No, I don't.
I can give him my three minutes.
I must have more time.
No, we're going to be done here soon.
Of course you are, because you don't want to answer questions. You don't want to be responsible for what's going to happen.
I'm responsible.
If the union does strike, how are you going to get the streets done?
First of all, you don't know anything about the contract.
Really? I don't.
No, you don't.
Really, I don't.
No, you don't. So we're done with this conversation.
What's this?
I don't know what it is.
It's a contract. It's your proposal to the union.
Again, we're not discussing this.
Of course you don't want to discuss it.
Are you done, sir?
No, I'm not done.
Well, it's either you're going to be done or we're going to have an injunction.
Because here's the deal.
If I may, their council discusses negotiations in an executive session. It's appropriate under the law for them to discuss it.
That may be true. I have one question. Ma'am, have you read this?
I have the one you have.
Have you read this proposal?
Is this the one? Which one is that?
This is the one that was sent back to the union. Have you read this?
Yes, we have.
Have you seen what they have done in there?
Yes, but we're still negotiating. That's not standing. We still negotiating. They came back with one and then...
This is shameful. I have copies if anyone would like to see it.
I would.
Here.
Did you also provide them the one you came back with?
That one was ridiculous, but I didn't come back with it.
Well, I'm just saying, you better get both.
So you don't want to get the ridiculous side. You just want to think you want to banter what this side was. And all that is, is attempt to start out for negotiations and talk. So we are done with this. We are not going to discuss this. This is not a public forum to you to try to grandstand for something like this.
I'm not grandstanding.
I'm going to make a motion for council to adjourn.
See, what he's trying to say is, Mr. Orchowski, is that that affects every resident citizen of Vanessa.
So does the fact that for the last three years, past garbage collection in this city, you residents owe the city over two hundred thousand dollars a year for the last three years.
That was my other question, David. I was going to hold off.
The fact that we're tight this year on money is because the residents don't contribute what they're legally bound to.
Why don't you give advice and make them do it?
We're working on it.
We are working on it civilly and criminally.
And what is the plan? That was one of the other questions I wanted. I'm grandstanding.
We're going to be filing at the magistrate's office.
Who's filing this?
Mr. Davis, the code enforcement officer.
And there are... What's the format?
There's summary offenses for not following the statute. There's also civil action.
Okay, when did council make the decision to go to this route?
Council doesn't have to make the decision. That's, the code enforcement's prerogative to collect.
I'm the director of the code office. I told him to.
You told him to do that? Excellent. What have we collected? Well, I'd rather talk about this at another time, but I don't grandstand. I'm not a...
In your opinion, sir.
My opinion is the correct opinion. You are a officer, are a dictator, are an attempted dictator. And I'll be honest with you, I'm not impressed.
Don.
I know you don't.
Don, if I can say this one thing, we have scheduled other meetings because after, just not disclosing anything about we have met and we came to realize that the way that both sides approached this in the beginning was wrong. And we did. We both said that. And so after meeting, we just, we made several dates and we come to agree that we say in order to even come to any kind of agreement, we have to come with realistic views from both sides.
Thank you.
Because, and that's where we're at. So we both acknowledge that. We both acknowledge that and realize that we are going to come any closer unless we realistically consider each other's side. So we are working on that. We set extra dates, so we're hoping we will come closer each time. But there are dates. Right, I understand that. So we have set dates and we both have said we seriously neither don't play games and try to come closer each meeting to what we can agree on.
Both sides were at fault.
Yes, and we both, and I, we addressed that. We addressed that.
The last contract that was...
Yes, and we addressed that because one wrong didn't make another. Two wrongs don't make it right. And we both realized that.
I'm a businessman.
Yes.
And you don't give fifty cent an outrage for five years in the rug.
And we realize, so we hopefully each time we'll come closer.
The last contract.
I have nothing to do with that.
I'm worried. Ms. Orchowski, I don't want to be confrontational, but this is important to the citizens. Whether, I understand you're not going to give me details about that. But you know, when I saw this and I saw that was struck out of it.
For the record.
And their response, it was both astronaut.
If the agreement expired, they can work under the terms of the current agreement till successor agreement is completed.
But I do have a bunch of other questions, but it is Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
You too, Don.
And I'll see you on the 30th.
Right, I just want to ask one question from Councilman Thomas. That's your opinion. You are only one of those.
I understand.
You've got three other ones.
I understand.
So that's our concern also.
I understand. I understand.
That they will outvote you in a minute.
I'm hoping, I understand that I'm only one, but um, I also understand that. Here's what I, I've seen. There's so many things that have been going on year after year after year after year after year. And people have, we as a city have allowed it to continue in that manner. And the thing is, we're never gonna get, nothing's gonna change if we continue in the same way. It's not you people, you people, it's supposed to be we people. And until we get that, we're never gonna go in here, we're gonna continue to fuss and fight against one another, and it shouldn't be that way. So unless we can come together and forget that it's us against each other, and remember we're one. And realize that street crew are all of us, they benefit us, realize that we benefit you, cause we are really all one. You know, it shouldn't be you facing us or we facing you. In actuality, we should be circled together and linked up. Because everything we do and everything you do affects us as a whole, as a whole. We all affect, you're affected by what decisions we make, we are affected by what you guys do. So, cause we are all the city of Manassas. So, we're gonna make a difference, we gotta stop this. And be real, cause it's not gonna change. And we can't keep saying, we all have to change. I'm telling you, I'm telling you. This is where we've got, because it's continued this wrong for thirty, forty years. And this is where we're at. And, and here's my, I thought about this and I said, you know what, I'm sitting there. And for thirty, forty years, Manassas was rolling into money. But, where were we? When we were rolling into money, no one came, we didn't come to meetings, cause we didn't care, money was rolling in and rolling out, but meanwhile, where was the money going? No one cared. But now that there's no money, I'm just saying, now that there's no money, we're all here. We wanna manage every little dime now, but there's nothing really to manage if you think about it. There's nothing to manage anymore. We had millions of dollars when Emile was up and running all the stores, but did we worry about how it was being managed? No, we didn't. Seriously, we didn't. We all had great jobs, we all had money, we didn't care. I'm being honest, am I wrong or am I right?
You're right.
Am I wrong or am I right? I am, I am, that's what I'm looking at, the bigger picture. And it's, and that's exactly what I'm looking at. Now that we're all on bottom line, we're all concerned. But what's it to be concerned about where there's no money to go anywhere? So now we're starting where we're at now, and it's good that everyone's coming, cause we need everybody to pitch in and figure out how we're gonna get out of this. So like you gave good ideas today too, and if everybody knows something, we, if we gotta all pitch in and give ideas to help us all as a whole. Cause four of us or three of us can't do it, we need everybody, I'm telling you. We really do.
And not to make any excuses or anything, this council has gotten slammed by things that have never been seen in this city. Nor that they've been sitting in this county, nor have they been seen in this state. Okay, it's easy to cherry pick on that side if you don't know the nightmare that's up on this side. And I'm sorry. I'll give you my word, we're trying to bust our butts to make sure everybody still has a job. This city is flat broke. It's so broke, you can't even blow dust off of it, there's nothing left. Okay? That's your hard reality, whether you like it, you can say anything you want about me, the numbers aren't gonna lie. And we can be happy to give you numbers. Okay? It's happened over years.
It wasn't six months, it's been billions for thirty, thirty years. It's been beyond its means for thirty years, they spent money like it was going out of style.
I went through.
Every one of those mayors up there.
Okay, I went through minutes, and you guys can sit there and think this is funny or it's not. I've gone through minutes for the last couple councils, alright? I can show you things that are out of the councils, like one of the simple things, seventy-five hundred dollars. Okay, a couple years ago, I wasn't on council, wasn't around nothing, the wind symphony came in here, am I correct? Alright? It was paid out of bond money that was, should've been used for infrastructure. Okay? There's so much waste in this damn city, it's absolutely ridiculous over the years. And now you're gonna sit here and get all technical about everybody, when we're trying our best to bang our heads against the wall. It's bad enough, we don't have a mayor that hasn't showed up in over eighteen meetings, okay? We were all brand new. God rest his soul, Councilman Charvali passed away and that crippled us, because he was an anchor. He was here from the prior administration, and he knew what was going on. Okay? This poor lady gets pounded every day with at least thirty or forty different problems that we have to reconfigure the will. Alright? Whether you like it or not, the three of us are in constant contact with our solicitor about every little thing that happens.
And no Delmar Inc. is not charged for phone calls.
Correct. Okay, but there are things in this city that have continued to go on because the answer is, and I don't have to say names, you all know who you are. That's the way we've done it. Well, guess what? When this way it's been done, we're finding out it's been done wrong. We're trying to protect the city. You know what? You know guys, ladies? Come on up to this side, and I guarantee you, you're gonna go, holy shit, this is ridiculous. Alright? We are not out for anybody, we are to protect the jobs. We're gonna bust our butts to make sure we can continue with what we have and who we have. But, you have no idea what we're going nuts to make sure that everybody has payroll for Christmas. Okay? We're over two hundred thousand dollars right now, we don't have. Okay? The simple solution, while everybody in the chief seats wants to yell and scream at us, is for us to say, you know what? We're laying you all off. See ya, bye, we'll see you sometime next year, see if you can't afford you. That's not what we're doing. Okay? It's not what we're doing. She's scrapping and going nuts trying to figure out what we, wait, any pennies we can get from anywhere, pennies. Alright? I know it was a constant thing about the Christmas lights someone said, alright? Then the rumor was, yeah, Tony wants to shut them off. Okay, you know what Tony said he was gonna shut them off? Because it was more important to spend fifteen hundred dollars in a paycheck for an employee in this place than burn a Christmas light so someone has money for Christmas. If you wanna condemn me for that, knock yourself out. But Mr. Feehan busted his butt with Lois and everybody else to turn around and we got contributions. You don't see that, you don't hear any of that stuff, but you all wanna sit here and go at it, well, you're doing this, you're doing that. You have no clue what we're doing, and we're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can.
If you ask nicely for stuff, Ernie and I get into an argument every meeting. There has not been a meeting that Ernie and I have not yelled anything to. But he asked me last meeting if he could see the bills and the, what else was it, the bills and the?
Even the expenditures.
The expenditures. He asked me nicely, so what did I do? Had Judy print him out a nice little packet.
But for the record, Dave, with the solicitor's fees, and, and I'm not getting on Young Joe, everybody has a right, his firm has a right to make money, I get it. But all I, my, my only question ever was, was the, the billing of every little thing. And, in the past it was, I got the invoices, I know I did the writing, and it was only because of the fact that it bothered me so much the money didn't be being spent. And the other thing is, is this is the second meeting now that we looked into W E C. I mean, is it time to honestly hire an in-house engineer?
That's one of the things I was gonna bring up. My only other question before I'm done is, how did you ever think you were gonna make it without a tan note issue?
I mean, no.
We had the tan note, we had to pay it back though, Delmar.
I know, but what about the one for the coming four months?
We have, you can't get two tan notes, we barely even credit to get the one we paid off that was from last year.
The problem is, when we did not have a quorum, five months.
You build up bills.
It wasn't just building up bills, it ruined the city's credit. So because the mayor and Gil didn't come, it screwed the city's credit line with everybody. So we can't get a second tan note in a year.
And we're applying for next year for another tan note to carry us over like it always happens, okay? A perfect example, Don, you wanna know total disclosure and everything, I appreciate your questions, but, this coun, not this council, every administration, and I'm not blaming Lou, I'm not blaming Eric, Joe, okay? Every administration takes the friggin' garbage tax from the next year and spends it to barely get through the year. Okay? Because garbage taxes come out in October for two thousand nineteen, alright?
So they're continuing to live beyond their means, just kicking it down.
You're a businessman, I'm gonna ask you, are you gonna spend next year's expenditures on this year already? Because if you do?
Hopefully not.
Thank you.
But they've been doing it for thirty years, Don.
They've been doing it for thirty years and it's wrong people to pay Paul and it's killing us.
That's, that was my point about WEC. You spent two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. On WEC this year so far, I see you're spending more money. Okay, you need an engineer.
We didn't spend that much money.
Well, this is, these are the numbers that I was given. I've made some inquiries. If you hired an engineer, couldn't you still use funds from certain places to cover that man's wages or woman's?
Yeah, but one man can't do everything that a co, a company can do. He doesn't, he's not just an engineer.
Well, I mean, I seen that it looked like in that bill for, for, for W E C this time that they, they did four catch basins. It was five thousand something plus two thousand, I'm assuming that the two thousand is for W E C?
No.
No, what was it for?
It was for a different catch basin.
Did you consider hiring an engineer to try to keep those costs down?
I've been looking at everything since July.
Did you also consider delegating two employees or hiring two employees? And paying them directly out of that fund? This is a suggestion, I'm not down here to grandstand. I'm smiling.
I'll take those things.
I'm, I'm, I'm getting underbite, but I'm not biting. I'm down here to try to make some constructive criticisms and suggestions. You know, you spent that money, you could've hired two people full-time that could've been out there fixing these catch basins. You have the equipment in town where they can dig them out, I watched Moren, I put a catch basin in two years ago, I'm sorry Dave, I gotta tell the truth. I watched you put the thing in, I watched you pour the concrete, and I watched you pull the forms off and crack the, crack the concrete. And guess what, two years, it's still that way. If you had people, if you had people dedicated to doing that, you could pay for them out of the line usage fee. For the different things that they have to do. I watched this crew here. And that sewage was backed up and flowing down over the hill by Park's Service Station, I watched them busting their butts. Hopefully that, that time that they spent there came out of that fund.
Yeah, that was my question, is my, is my salary when I do that type of work, does it come out of line usage? I mean, just to help you guys out. I mean, but it should.
I personally don't know, Delmar.
No, it comes out of the general fund.
But I'm just saying, Tony, couldn't you break it down to where anything is done with the vactor truck or?
We, we're hands are tied about where they allow us to take money from where it comes. The general fund has to pay all the salaries, all the benefits.
Right, but I mean, the, the line usage money, if you looked into it, I'm sure that a bulk of my salary, if I run the sweeper truck, if I, if I'm on the vactor truck, if I'm rebuilding catch basins, I'm almost certain that most of that money should be able to come out of that money.
Let me ask, let me ask you this, will you keep your time, cause I have no idea.
Yes, I break it down to, we break it down to how many hours that, that, that I, I could do that. I mean, break it down to how many hours, me and Moren Kravitz both, that's two employees that you're looking to pay most of our salary.
That's what he's getting at, can you, can you break it down so it shows us?
I'm trying to help here.
You know, I appreciate that.
You know what I'm saying?
That's something we could look into, uh, for, for twenty nineteen for sure.
Absolutely.
If you're, if you're doing work on the sewage line, I don't wanna commit anything right now.
Right, yeah, yeah, I get it.
Because there's, there's certain ways you could use, um, line usage fee for sewage work. But, you know, we gotta make sure that we're.
I'm thinking if I'm, if I'm building catch basins, if I'm jetting sewer lines, if I'm, you know what I mean? If I'm, even a sweeper truck, D P gotta see that report every month, they're gonna wanna know where you're spending your money.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, it's possible you could take the bulk of my salary, the bulk of Mark Kravitz's salary, the two guys that are constantly on that, that equipment.
And switch it to line usage.
And switch it, I'm just, that's just a suggestion.
No, it's, it's good to spitballers.
If you did that, you'd have two people dedicated to that, that would give you an extra cushion to work with. Yeah, it's not gonna solve all the problems. And he's absolutely correct, you can mark that on your calendar.
We record that.
This is a festive, but it is.
It's just been, as you said, the way things have been done. And you're like, she said, oh, it's much, now there's much, now you gotta get creative and think outside of the box.
We've looked outside of the box so much, we're into Denora, trust me, okay?
I love that.
But it's not a planet that.
Yes, that's my planet.
But, but the thing is.
We haven't get a, a form. I had to turn that in every week to the sewage authority. On how ma, how many, uh, sewage, uh, lines he cleaned out, how many catch basins he cleaned out, how much debris he picked up off the street. That goes to the sewage authority, and they're charging us line usage fee. So we should check into that, because these guys do the forms. They have them over the sewage authority. So why can't we not check into that and see why this man here and his partner can't get paid from that? And that takes a burden off of you.
Could you and, Mark, you guys link up with Joey and Mo's?
If I can find the information, Dave, I'll help you on anyway.
Thanks, man, I appreciate it. I mean, those are fantastic, and I thank you all for suggestions for us to move forward, cause like Lois said, it's gonna take this kind of discussion and thinking to do what we can going forward.
Even, even little things, like the rubber gloves I wear for, the white socks I wear.
The problems that you have.
Those come out of line usage.
Right, yeah.
But the thing.
The problems that you have are insurmountable. We gotta understand this. When I was in office, we went into contract negotiations. At that time, Josh Rito's was the head of finances. If we get a contract immediately, we're gonna save eight or ninety thousand dollars a month, you remember that, Delmar? When we sat down with you people? Alright, we looked at that. Every session that I had in contract negotiation, I prefaced my remarks. I says, you're getting something that we can't give you, did I not do that?
I didn't say that.
Well, did they tell you that? I prefaced my remarks, every negotiation. I was gonna take the city intact forty-seven. Because that's where we belong, at that point. But what happened? Charvali got into office after that. Alright, he says, well, let's try the early intervention program. Early intervention program, we got into it, okay? But how did we make it? Got rid of the municipal complex, which was bleeding the city, of ten thousand dollars a month. Sold it, they got cash for two hundred forty-five thousand dollars, went into the bank. Alright? There was a, a work permit for the Mandali Sewage Authority for a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Sold East Gate eleven for eighty-one thousand. Sold the, uh, old city hall for sixteen thousand. Sold the parking lot to Moser for eight thousand. That money helped us to make it. If it wasn't for that, we'd have been in, it would've been bankrupt, just like I said, we should've went into act forty-seven. But no, they wanted us to try and make it. And where are you at? You're still in the city, you've been treading water for years, how long could you tread your water? Alright, you make your bills. The streets are still bad, the sewers are still bad, the bite is still bad. You're not gonna make it. And I'm, and I'm being upfront with you, I wanted to put this, the city in act forty-seven.
People have to understand too, things happen in the city, and Delmar, you're just, you know this, you busted your butt about this. We had the big sinkhole, didn't we?
Yeah.
Alright, nobody expected that. That cost us eighty-four thousand dollars?
The bottom line, I just want everybody to know, no matter what you do, you're not gonna make it.
We didn't expect.
It's impossible, you could try to cut here, you could try to cut there, it's not gonna happen.
So what do we do, just roll over?
No, no, you go act forty-seven, it's what you have to do.
But again.
It should've been done years ago.
Again, Lou's right, but again, this council is trying to make sure we don't do that. Because that will affect you.
I'm coming up. I'm coming up with my figures, I predict you're gonna be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in debt at the end of the year. It's what you're gonna be.
That affects every one of you, that affects the police, it's gonna affect everybody.
Oh, absolutely.
We don't want to do that. We are dying up here to try to make sure that doesn't happen.
I appreciate the effort.
Seriously.
Seriously, I do appreciate the effort.
Well, there's a combination of everything that put us in this, so you just can't blame it on some things.
We're blaming it on the last twenty-five, thirty years. If not longer. So that's it, but that's in a nutshell.
And you guys can't just blame it on us.
You can't blame it on us.
We're trying to fix it.
Then you, look, look, you have, you have nothing to be ashamed of, you didn't do anything. Don't you understand? You were handed a bad situation. You was handed the worst situation, not a bad situation, the worst, one that you can't make it, just like I was handed the same thing. But if it wasn't for them pennies in heaven, guess what, I wouldn't have made it either. And you shouldn't have been in early intervention program, you should've been in act forty-seven four years ago.
And I'm, and I'm sorry.
And the reason I say that, listen to me. I was handed a budget, six hundred thousand dollars less than the administration before me. And I was handed a debt service, which they didn't make a payment, I had to make it, with six hundred thousand dollar budget less.
And we're still making it.
And you're still making it, and you're gonna make it to the year twenty forty, that's why you can't make it. And you gotta go act forty-seven, and you're wasting your time, and you're wasting your breath.
You know what it cost the city January first? It's up to four hundred eighty-five thousand, did it go up?
What it's gonna do, you, you're gonna look at four hundred, if it wasn't for refinancing, the bond would've been held.
Lou, hold on, I want you to get hurt.
I'm not gonna get hurt.
January second, we got a bond debt payment, four hundred eighty, four hundred eighty thousand, like he's talking about.
To the year twenty forty.
Thank you, okay? We have another one. That's eighty-eight thousand dollars a year, and I know I'm gonna say this, and you guys, some of you are gonna go off on this, but I'm gonna give you honest reality in the way it is. I know it's a hot potato, but it needs to be said, and yeah, if you wanna call me what you do, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna tell you to your face honestly what the answers are. The library, the city gets fifty thousand, fantastic, okay? You know what else would've cost you in the city? Eighty-eight thousand dollars a year. Do you know that? Doesn't cost, it, it, just not fifty, it still cost the city eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Bondage, that's the bottom line.
Thank you, thank you, it doesn't come from nowhere, and would you like me to tell the, the library? You know what, we own the building, January second, I'd like a check for eighty-eight thousand dollars please, so we can make our payments and we can do everything. The city covers that.
Do you know what the library cost you a year?